Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting and Finance Committee meeting. The Board of Selectmen are gonna open up their meeting. It is 4:03 PM.
Finance Committee will open their meeting at 4:03.
Welcome, everyone. Today's discussion in acceptance of the Omnius Pledge is the first thing on the agenda.
Are you gonna say for allegiance to him? That was on there.
No, it's not on here, but we can't.
Oh, is it not on the agenda?
I think it might be on the...
Is it on posting?
I think so.
Well, let's say it's like allegiance.
I'm sorry!
You okay, Rick?
Yep.
Did it take you long?
You don't even get up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into a public which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Okay, first thing on the agenda, discussion acceptance of the Omnius Pledge. Just being vote.
You know this one, right?
Yes.
Just check and make sure he did his job giving it to you guys. Cause I didn't make a copy.
No, he sent it to me and I made copies.
All right. Give my pins in my highlighter to start here.
But I changed it a little bit because I didn't like this was on a separate line.
Oh, not on mine, it's not.
Oh, on mine when I went to print it was on a separate line and I'm going, "No." That makes me crazy.
Well, cause I printed mine this way.
So, um, do you wanna go right through the departments as we go through and just accept them?
Well, basically, right, well, we, okay, we accepted this that we're giving to you. I mean, you can highlight some of the things. The select, you know, your budget, overall budget went up. You went down four percent. You know, you can highlight whatever unless you have any questions for us. You know, we could answer maybe some, something.
Do you wanna just, we'll go right through the departments and just check them off as we go and if you have any questions?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, just, just one thing. On the selectmen's budget, what will happen tonight is you guys will have to, it modified a little bit. It's what, exactly what the FinCon has, has approved, but you guys will just have to re-vote on, on that.
Right. Yeah, because the changes we were talking about?
Correct.
And then you discussed those with Mr. Ihawker already?
Yep.
Me and Mr. Ihawker did not discuss those.
Correct.
Nor did we with Mr. Belize. Okay. So, with the selectmen's budget, we're just gonna skip over that because FinCon's already approved it, will approve it tonight with the changes, so we'll just skip over the selectmen's budget and go right into benefits. You good with that?
Yep.
So, benefits. Do you have any questions or concerns about anything on that? Nothing's really changed too much.
It's just the normal.
Standard.
Retirement, you know, increase or end of medical insurance.
There's nothing we can do to adjust these, they're set rates.
No, I know, but you could just...
Do you have any questions? I'm, I'm basically asking.
Yeah, no, but I'm just saying, I just figured that would just be wise to mention, you know, the big things that stick out. That's all I was saying that, you know.
Do you have any just questions?
No.
Okay. So, debt, the retirement and all that, standard stuff. Do you have any questions about that? Selectmen B. The only thing that was changed was Selectmen A, right?
Correct. Just, just one change is Selectmen D.
Okay, so we'll skip that.
No, D, I said.
Oh, Selectmen D. Okay, Selectmen B. Yep, nothing's changed. We're good with that?
Yep.
Selectmen C, standard. We're good with that. Selectmen D, we'll skip because we have to vote on that tonight. We're good with that, right?
Okay.
Finance Committee. Standard, they haven't changed anything. You agree with that?
Yep.
When it comes to the accountant one, that actual aerial service, services, that's for our OPEB, other post, other post-employment benefits by mandate, you know, MGL, we have to do it every other year.
Yep, that's why you get that.
The 750 is like they update it and then now they do a full thing.
Okay. Do you have any questions about the town? Do you have any questions about that?
No.
They just asked for a line item transfer.
That's gonna be when we get to the special.
Okay, do you have anything, questions about the assessment budget?
They went down and moved, so.
Yeah, you formatted that one. The boxes didn't close up. I'm an appraisal service.
Yeah, I see that. One slipped my hand now.
Madeline!
Yes. If that's all I did was forget to, whatever, however I copied that over.
Well, we just started.
Hey, you know what? Let me tell you something. The bottom number is the most important.
It's the month. I don't care what little boxes you closed in, as long as the numbers match up.
I really care about the box borders.
Yeah, I know, you're all about format.
So anyways, the budget went down to 2.5%.
You good? Any questions about that?
No.
Treasure?
Uh, no.
Treasure down too.
Yeah, down point two.
Good?
Yep.
Tax collector? This is the one we need to be watching out for.
That increase, well, their salary was the first one, but then because the hours of the assistant had gone up, that's why that salary had a bigger increase because Ron worked like maybe nine or 10 hours a week.
Yeah, it went down, went up like 4,300 and some change.
So, I just wanted to mention that.
We good with that? Town clerk's office, any questions about that?
Is this election year stuff?
Yes, it is.
Presidential elections.
It always goes up with the election. So, planning board?
Yep. Now, it's the same thing, was the hours increase for the planning board. Okay.
I'm good with that. Conservation Commission? Well?
You can't say anything.
You can't say anything. I'm good with it.
Well, I can say anything, I can't vote on it.
Yeah, you can't vote on it.
Right, no, on the overall, you can, just not that. You can vote for the overall budget.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, building inspector?
That was a few more hours at a high rate.
Yep. So, went up like three grand, well, less than that. Say 2,800. So, good with that? Forester?
Yep.
You went up 500. Good?
That's fine.
Veterans, Veterans Agent?
Same.
Total government.
The benefits went up a little bit.
No, it was all zero across the board.
Yeah, so where did that go up?
Veterans went up zero.
Yeah, no changes.
No changes.
Total government A.
Oh, okay.
So, total government A, you good? Animal control, you good with that? I can't.
Okay, but I...
Yeah, that's fine.
I just wanna mention one thing. Okay, well, because people are watching.
Yep.
And there will be an article, I'll say it now, then, or do you want me to wait till the article comes?
You can talk about the article when it comes. We're just going right to the budgets.
Okay.
So, do you have any questions about animal control? I'm not voting on that.
No.
David, it involves the budget.
Okay.
It involves the budget.
It involves this.
Yeah, but when you actually come to the article, you'll have the article, you'll be able to explain it to them.
Okay, okay. That's fine.
This way we can just go right through these and then boom, right to the articles. Police Department?
That's fine.
And that's, that's with the...
That's the salary.
That's the salary with the new police office?
No.
That's without the new police?
Correct. Yeah, because you don't know if it's gonna pass. This is what we have, that amount they do it without the position. So, this went up like three percent and of course it's for the...
Contractuals. Fire Department, any question?
That one?
Yeah, they went up.
Well, because, because, because they added the new person in. They got a new person last year, so if you look at the salary, it's $51,000 difference. It's because you town meeting last year.
They added a person.
Added a person.
They're looking to add another one this year.
Right, but, but I'm just saying...
Because they're, they're another one.
No, but what I'm saying...
Can't rely on volunteers anymore.
Right, but what I'm saying is that it, you know, it's a big increase, but that's why, because it's a person. Last year, they would've voted on the 197 and then because they got the new position, now it's that higher rate.
You good with that?
Yeah.
Yep, that seems fine.
Yep. Didn't go up too much.
No, just the salaries really.
Good. Cemetery Commission? They went up, uh, $195.
But the thing is...
That's gonna break the bank right there.
But $195 for their department is a three percent increase.
I think that's acceptable.
Yeah.
All right. You gotta be able to bury people, you know? All right. They actually went down?
Yeah, almost four percent.
What's the leachate thing?
That, okay. All right, so it, it's been like this for many years. The leachate is whatever, what is it, Jim? The leachate is, like when it rains and...
Oh, yeah, that's, that's the service that, that they, that they provide to suck it up.
Yeah. No, but it's water, where it's capped or whatever it is. I'm not sure what leachate really is. Okay. It's been high for so long, okay?
Overbudgeted.
Overbudgeted for many years.
Okay.
Okay, and they had gone down, because I had recommended this before, when they were still the enterprise fund, I said, "Listen, you know, you've got the leachate and you're hardly pumping anything, nothing, you know, that, whatever they take." And so, anyways, we looked at the last year's.
Contract.
And...
It only came four times a year.
Right, four times a year. So, I said, and I think it was only $3,000, so, or 3,200, so...
2,800.
2,800, so we made, because we don't know from now to the end of the year, so.
So, it's $4,000, they dropped it down $8,000, which reduced their budget by four, four percent.
Right.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Reduce their, yeah, overall budget. Because the thing is, is that, you know, I went back and looked at, I think, five years or whatever and, you know.
Yeah. It's good.
It was time.
Now, one thing to also bring to the board, each board's attention on, on the Board of Health, there's a potential savings for some additional money in the future for, under landfill monitoring wells, okay? We pay quite a bit of money for, uh, there's two residents that are on these wells and they have to monitor them for, you know, potential contamination. And Barton and Le Judas has made a, a recommendation, who is the engineer, engineering firm that works with the Board of Health, that says if there was a way in which the town could work with the two neighbors that are next door to the landfill and possibly get them onto town water, the monitoring wells could potentially save the town somewhere around $30,000 a year in savings. So, that may be a discussion that either at the Board of Health level or at, at some executive level that, that you may wanna try to push that along, because that was a recommendation from the engineering firm and there's potential savings there.
So, there's two problems with that. We don't control the town water, because they're a private entity and we can't, if they want to do that, that's between them and the water department and, you know, we can't force a resident to get off their, their well water. Although if I lived right next to the dump, I'd probably wanna be on a well, well, be off my well water, but I don't know. That's, that's their decision. You know, we could talk to them about it and probably put them in contact with, with the water department, but again, that's, we don't control the water department at this point.
Right, 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 right. I mean, it, I mean, they had suggested, and I thought it was a pretty good idea of, you know, if, if all parties were, were, you know, able to, you know, come together and to try to work something out, it could be beneficial to everybody.
So, we're spending $40,000 for two residents?
Fifty-six, but the...
$56,000 for two residents?
No, 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 it's about $30,000 of the fifty-six.
But it's not the stuff they're monitoring at the land.
Right. So, we're spending $30,000 out of that for monitoring for these two residents. You know, we, we can open up a conversation, maybe they would want to do that. Maybe they don't even know that's an option.
Right, they may not.
Maybe they wanna go onto town water, but the water department would have to vote to add them, I believe.
No, I think it's, it's already, they're on the, they, they're on, been on the system. I don't think they need to add them. The school's on...
Right, they would just have to connect them.
They would have to connect them. But then who would pay for the connection fees? Because they would have to pay for the connection fees. Or would it be a better investment for the town to put it on an article to connect them? At no cost for them. Because if we connect them, because if you ask the property owner and say, "Hey, it's gonna cost you," say $10,000 to connect to town water, to dig it up and do a connection, it would be probably financially better for us to invest the $20,000 between the two of them. And then we'd be saving $30,000 after that, but they'd have to understand that they'd need to be paying the water bill at that point. But yeah, I, I think probably open up a conversation.
At least a discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
You know when their next, um, meeting is? Their website doesn't work.
Was that, I'm not sure.
Water District, they get a 404 error.
Are you kidding me?
West Warren Water?
Oh, is it West Warren Water?
West Warren.
Oh, ah, okay.
You gotta remember it.
Oh, but they don't have a website or anything, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, the thing is too, I, I would just think that my, I would think if this is what the, the town's engineer for the Board of Health is recommending, I would think that the, the Board of Health should probably be the first one to contact the residences, you know, first to see if they're in agreement and then, then get a hold of the water and then work things out.
Yeah. And it should be the Board of Health, because it's their bill, it's their debt, you know, it's something that they gotta pay. They might wanna, again, like you talked about, contact them and say, "Hey, this might benefit you." You know, we'd have to see how much it would be for a connection fee, because if, if they can't afford a connection fee and that's the sticking point, we could probably do that, but just let the town know, "Hey, we're paying it for this one time for these two residents, because we're paying for the wells." So, all right, other than that, we're good with the budget?
For, yeah, Board of Health, yeah.
Council on Aging?
Went down.
No, they went down too, huh?
I, I would like to make a comment on this one as well, Mr. Chairman, if I may. So, working with, with Sharon, the director, it was a struggle trying to, to get a van driver in place for services. We feel that the, the services that the van driver could potentially perform are, are very important. And it's tough to get somebody certified in all the steps and still keep them on in, you know, during that certification period. Certification includes MAR TAB, which would be a, a, a special type of certification that they would need to move disabled people in the van. They would also need CPR certification and first aid certification. And some of these classes are, are all, all over the spectrum and it's tough to say, "Well, you know, we're gonna hire you on May 1st, but the, the, you know, the, you know, we're not gonna have any work for you till you get completely certified and certification may take, you know, a few months' time." And we lose people on a part-time job on that. So, we were thinking about that and I made a suggestion to Sharon and she liked it, of combining a custodial, a part-time custodial and part-time van driver. So, so if we have somebody that's maybe potentially looking to be in this capacity and we can't get them certified right away, they could be doing other things and still, you know, having, you know, stable, part-time work. They could be doing custodial work around the, around the facility. They could be, you know, helping unload boxes, they could be moving equipment around, setting up for events and so forth. So, we were able to combine the part-time position into one and save money.
About $9,000.
About $9,000.
Yeah, awesome. Good job.
Yeah.
So, that's one of the main reasons why that budget went down a little bit.
Very good. Thinking outside the box. I love it. All right. You have any questions about that? You good?
Looks good.
All right, libraries. Do you have any questions about that?
No.
West Warren went up $8,000.
That's because the year before, between '23 and '24, they only went up 3,000. They probably should've had to increase their budget the year before. So, from '23 to '24, it went up like $3,000. So, this year, it went up 7,937, but if you look at the year before, if they had gone up five, and then it wouldn't have been as much.
And that based, it's based on salaries or fuel expenses and stuff?
Yeah, for everything.
All right. Do you have any questions about the libraries? All right, Parks and Recreation. They went down.
Yep.
Went down, say, $29,000 almost.
$3,620.
Yep, yeah. So, that's a good thing.
Yep.
What'd they go up? Oh, staffing?
Yes.
The staffing.
Because they're going to have a article.
Yep, they created a position for a part-time person.
So, that really needs to win, you know, should be taken into consideration when that article comes up, that they did cut their Omnius by 37, 36,000. So, it's not that they're asking for a new person, didn't cut anything.
Okay. You good with that? Okay. So, total government?
Yep.
Our total government B?
Yep, was 4.5%. Oh, 4.3%, I'm sorry. Total overall government is 4.5.
So, you good with both those? Okay. Vocational education.
Mr. Chairman, I, I will say on the Volk Ed Transportation, that is not a, an official number. That's a best guesstimate number as, you know, the final numbers won't probably be available until after town meeting. It's about a three percent, a little over three percent increase, we're assuming for, for transportation.
But for tuition and education?
Tuition is exact, yeah.
Yep, tuition went up just a little bit, say...
Four percent.
About eight, $800. And then the transportation went up, is it $1,300?
Yep.
So, sort of for a total expense of $60,847 for vocational education to go transportation.
Wait a minute, it says that we had to transfer money into vocational transportation because we got the bill after that?
Right, because that's what happens.
Okay, but did that...
That does not get...
Okay, okay. That did not add into here.
Correct, so what happens is...
What are we spending this year on transportation?
I don't know what the article was, it the special, do you?
I'm sorry?
The article on the special for transportation.
Transportation. I think, I thought it was around 44, so I'm wondering if this 44,000? Forty-four, no, the final number was, ended up being 44,000.
You've got, your reports are upstairs.
Yeah.
So, that's just my question, is that forty thousand gonna be enough?
A- again, that's an estimate, it's a guess, um, we can look at it in the fall when we have a rock solid number, we'll probably just have to put some more money in, like we did last time.
And that could be based on contractual issues and transportation?
Usually, uh, Mr. Duff will call around and, and, and try to get the best price for us, uh, when it comes to transportation. I know that Vanpool has had, had the contract for us for the last couple of years, I'm not sure if they're still gonna be there, um, at, you know, at the best price. But, you know, when I spoke to Mr. Duff, you know, he, he wouldn't have that number till a little bit later on.
But the current numbers that we're looking at based on right now is about a three percent increase.
Correct.
Correct. I just wanted to state, yes, what, the omnibus budget is what was approved at town meeting. Um, because sometimes departments have transfers. We don't say, oh, by the way, this department transferred X amount of dollars, or this department needed more money, you know, this is what we're looking budget to budget.
Sometimes it's just unexpected expenses.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, so, example. We'll say the Shepherd Building, expense account, okay? In years past, there's been line item transfers from that, so, yes, I could do what she's mentioning, then I would need to say, okay, you only spent X amount, and then when you wanna at, increase it the next year, it's gonna show, oh wow, this is a big percent increase. You, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. All right, you good?
Mm-hmm.
You good with vocational education? Path by their assessment?
They had a big jump.
They went up.
Ten percent.
They went up ten percent? Oh yeah, because they went up, yeah.
Do they have more students? No, one, one additional student.
So they added up students, all right.
But, if you notice, they've been very-
They've been very good with their budget.
Frugal, so the year before that, it only went up eleven thousand dollars. And I'm sure expenses, as we all know-
They go up. But then we also, they got another student, and-
Right, you know.
All right, you good with that?
Yep.
Okay, the subtotal of all that, it's gonna be seven million three, um-
Thirty-eight thousand.
Sorry.
Thirty-eight thousand.
Yes, seven million thirty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. So that's for everything so far, without doing the school.
So that's about four point eight eight, so.
So, good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the school district. Quaybog Regional Middle High School District. The debt exclusion, um-
The debt all went down.
They went down. The debt, um, repair, that went down. Same thing with debt, debt exclusion for the middle high school.
Does this mean we're getting closer to paying these off?
I would assume so, I don't know all that tech, you know-
That'd be nice, huh?
But, when we, when you're getting down to ten thousand, I mean, I, you know, um, and twenty-two thousand each year, it's going down, um, I don't remember. And I'm trying to remember what the big one was for the elementary school.
At some point, it would probably be best for us to just to pay off the debt, so we're not incurring interest, because if they're, if we're incurring interest annually, versus if we could look at how much it would be to pay off the amount in full, do we just wanna keep on kicking it down the street and incur interest?
That's something that you would have to deal with Quaybog, because this is what we pay them, it's not-
No, no, but, this is probably a discussion we need to start having, because if these amounts are getting low enough, it'd probably be the best interest for the long term to just pay off the debts.
Right.
We did that with some other debts that we had, um, because it was just financially better to do, and it freed up credit for us.
Yeah.
So... But other than that, are you good?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, you have to, okay, that's the debt, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself.
And then minimum local contribution?
Went down.
It went down, okay. Um, the above minimum contribution went up.
Twenty-six percent.
Yep.
It went up twenty-six percent. So it went from six hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and three dollars to seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars.
What did you all think about that?
Um, well, well, what did we just finish? Can you read the transportation and then we'll-
Well, we're, we're on-
Right, but it's all together in the budget, so we can talk.
So, and then the transportation actually went down. It went from seven hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and fifteen to six hundred and forty-four thousand seven hundred and twelve.
Sixteen percent.
Right, fifteen point five four.
So-
So the overall assessment, okay, let me just say this first before we, the overall assessment for the contribution above in transportation went down point two percent. Mr. Duff came into our meeting, which was a pleasant surprise, we didn't ask him to come, and he doesn't mind his own, that was big. It was big.
He, he doesn't run away from the tough questions, he faces an enthectic.
But he said, I remember him saying at one of your meetings, that I am not gonna come in with a budget way up here, and we're gonna settle down there. So he said, and I know you're probably aware, but, you know, I'm not sure where everything's at, because I don't really follow all their legislation votes and stuff. He said that they're still talking on the school, you know, because it's the House and then the Senate or whatever. And he said, depending on what that goes, because they may be getting more for our minimum local contribution, he said that that number could possibly go down, if they get more money, it's gonna go down.
It's not gonna break the bank, because they're going from, I don't know if they're gonna go from the sixty, well, they went, they gave a six thou, well, it was sixty dollars per student last year.
Sixty or six thousand?
Sixty.
Sixty.
Sixty dollars, okay, to, now they're going to a hundred and four dollars per student, that passed the Ways and Means, but it still has to go through less, the rest of it. It can be reduced in between then, um, but Ways and Means recommended a hundred and four. Um, so if you get the hundred and four, and you look at the total of everything, it's really not gonna make a significant change, because you're only going up, you know-
Forty-four dollars.
We, yeah, you're going up forty-four dollars from last year, which-
Isn't much, but-
It's not much, but it helps.
But he said that, that number may go down, I mean, and so it may be down, so, yes, it was a big increase, but we saved quite a bit on the transportation. You know, so, like I said, the overall budget was down nine thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars for the total operating. And I also said to Steve-
Now, this year is contract negotiations with the bus companies? I, I think transportation contract is up now, I believe. It's either this year or next year, I don't know. That could affect changes, because they've incurred a lot of costs, um, because of fuel expenses going up, and again, fuel's going up again now. You know, if anybody's paying attention, it went up, what, thirty, forty cents in the past month?
Yes. So, I also said, we as a committee agreed that, you know, we said to Steve, you know, we said we, or Mr. Duff, I called Steve, I'm sorry. But, um, that we realized, you know, everything going on, I said, but we did say to him, this number needs to start going the other way.
And we had that in our, our meeting, we, we said the above minimum contribution needs to go the other way, needs to go to zero. They, at some point, we'd like to see it in zero, whether we'll ever see that, I don't know.
But it's gotta start going the other way.
But it needs to go the other way, it can't keep on going up.
And he said he understood, so.
Yeah. And he said that's what, that was his goal, is to get to zero at some point too. So as long as all of us are under the understanding that that's the way it's gonna go.
And plus, also too, we should be getting, and I'm not sure how much we're gonna get back for the article of what they received from region, the, the transportation from last year, we don't have that much yet, so.
The reimbursement.
So that overall would, you know, lower the budget. I mean, it would be good if, if there was money in our pocket, but yet on the other hand, it's not gonna be adding on to our tax rate. You know, this whole, this twenty-six percent, because say if we get another fifty thousand, you know, this, he's already, it's a hundred and sure, maybe we can add, a hundred fifty-eight thousand decrease, and we're giving them one fifty-nine, so it's a thousand overall on affecting the tax rate difference from, you know, the same from last year, so.
Okay. Are you good with that?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Again, we all agree that it needs to be going the other way, but we're working towards it. Okay, so total operating assessment for the school would be four million three hundred and seventy-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. And that-
Added with the debts, the next one.
Yeah.
Four million five one four two fifty-eight.
So...
So grand total for all the budget, eleven million five fifty-two four seventy-eight, which is two point eight two percent.
So it's two point two, two point-
Two point eight two.
Eight-two percent above last year's, which really, with everything going on in the world and everything happening, it's really not that bad.
So what I said in our meeting, which I'll say it again, that I want to, you know, give a shout out and, um, appreciate the hard work that all the departments do. That there hasn't been a lot of increases asked for, and they pretty much, you know, brought their budgets and just basically asked for what they really needed, and I think that they need to be, you know, congratulations for doing a good job for the town.
Absolutely.
And two point eight two budget, I think is reasonable with, you know, contracts and, um, all the step increases for the employees.
I agree, they did a great job. You know, the town's a, a decent financial situation, where, um, you know, we're working together to make these things happen, and you guys are doing a really good job, and it's not just the departments, it's FinCom that's really doing a good job, you know, ensuring that people are, are holding to a budget. And it's not a free-for-all, um, you have that oversight and the recommendation of what you're doing, and you're doing a great job with that too, along with the departments and everybody's working together.
Right.
And I know there can be contentious points, any point when anybody's talking, you know, people, people want their, wanna get certain things, and sometimes it's just not financially doable this time. So, um, you did a great job, so. The omnibus budget. Are we good with that?
Yep.
So we gonna do a vote to accept it?
Yep.
We're gonna accept this without accepting select board?
You can do it later tonight.
No, we can do it later. We can do it tonight.
Yep. Because we've already-
Unless we can do-
Well, we could just do the recommendation, well, no, because we gotta do the, we can't, because we gotta vote
You have to do it.
To accept the selectmen's budgets with the changes now.
Yep.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll vote for that, and then we'll vote to do the omnibus.
That's what's on the list.
Awesome. You guys are thinking ahead. It's almost like you know what we're thinking.
Well, sometimes once you've been working with somebody long enough, you know, just like Ray's saying something up there, and they said, Ray, I already know where you're going, I know where you're going.
But that's good, that's good. All right, so moving on to the special town meeting warrant. The articles, as we go through them. The great, we're doing a Quaybog, um, the school assessment for Art- Article One. Do you want me to read them out for every one of them, or are we good?
You didn't send me, did you send an email with the, the center?
No.
Oh, okay, all right.
You have to look at the paper.
Well, I was gonna put it on the screen.
Oh, I think you sent it to me. Do you want me to forward it to you?
Yeah, I think we do that, so we can put it on the screen, so this way I don't have to read them out, so if people have questions about it, they can see it. That's gonna save them, because people may be confused if I read each article.
Yeah, plus, because you have to be ready for your six o'clock meeting.
Good thing is, these, these are fairly short.
That's a special, the annual's not.
Yeah, Karen, I need both, special and annual.
I got it.
And I'm not reading special, well, the annual.
Annual's a lot.
It's done.
We'll take up the whole rest of the meeting, just reading those.
All right, STM.
Did you get it?
Yep.
Yep.
Travis, I hope you're putting these up on the-
Yeah, on the chair's screen.
And the website, so people can read them along, because I'm not gonna be reading all these articles tonight. So that'll allow them to keep track of what's going on, so just go by the article numbers. All right? So Article One. We don't have a number.
Not yet, no.
So, we can't really decide too much on that.
Well, but you can just say vote to reduce the budget, their assessment, so.
Again, yeah, it's a vote to reduce the, um, the FY twenty-four Quaybog Regional School District Assessment and the, um, State Aid Transportation Access Reimbursement. So, this is a standard article that's always on there. So we're good with that, right?
And FinCom recommends.
And FinCom recommends, you good with that? If you just say FinCom recommends, I'm not just gonna repeat that, I just-
Yep, they're all recommended by FinCom, pointy.
All right, there you go.
How's that?
So all, all the special town meeting articles are recommended.
Except the one that you got up that, um, she just gave you. And we recommend that one too.
Is this the special?
Yep. And that one you'll have to read, but we recommend it too.
So-
That, we'll do it last.
Yeah, that's a, that'd be the final article, which is, would be Article Eight. Okay, so number two. And that's a transfer of a hundred twenty-five thousand, and do you have any objections to that, that's from Highway Department?
No.
Okay, good with that? Article Three, that's a transfer of eight thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars.
No.
Good with that? Okay, Article Four, and that's a transfer of five thousand dollars, Highway Two.
That's fine.
Article Five, that's a transfer, and that's three thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-nine cents.
Small nice step of steps.
And that's Highway.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
Okay, Article Six, this is, uh, a transfer, and it's twenty-five hundred dollars, this is Fire Department.
Yep, that's good.
And Article Seven, and this is for one thousand six hundred and four dollars, and that's Town Administrator. Good with that?
That's fine.
And number eight?
And Article Eight?
And Article Eight, sorry, I forgot about Article Eight already. And that is, the Board of Assessors is requesting a line item transfer at the special town meeting for two thousand three hundred dollars. We would like to transfer the amount from the assessor's clerk salary expense to the assessor's mapping expense. Okay, are you guys good with that?
Yep.
And FinCom hasn't, you guys haven't voted on that yet, right?
We did.
I just told you, we recommended it.
You recommended, so, FinCom recommends that too. All right. Okay, on to the annual town meeting warrant. You can bring that one up, you get that?
That's up.
Okay, same thing, we'll go through them, and Article One.
Oh, we don't, three is where we should start.
Yeah.
Well, Article One is a standard article, um, that's added on there each time, so are you good with that, Rich? Article Two, standard.
Yep.
Article Three, and this is for a full-time firefighter, at forty-six thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars, that's recommend, that's for the Fire Department, FinCom recommends.
Yep, good with that.
Those ones aren't showing up on Zoom.
Which one?
The, the ones that are on now.
I share it.
I, 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 I'm taking it down here.
Yeah, I share it.
Because the, the first bunch were showing up on Zoom, but the, um, it's like, us lot, it's not showing up so. Cause the first bunch were showing up on Zoom, but the, um, it's like, us lot, it's not showing up on the screen.
Now we.
Maybe I hit it off.
Now it should be showing?
In a second.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. I think it is now, yeah.
Do you wanna show the first two, so people see? So because you didn't see them on Zoom, the first two are Article One and Article Two, which is standard. And then Article Three is the one we're talking about right now, and we recommend that one. We're good with that?
Yep.
And Finance Committee recommends. Article Four is for a full-time police officer at the rate of fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. And FinCom recommends. You good with that?
Yep.
Alright, Article Five, to see if the town will vote to create a position for a building inspector, to help. Building inspectors is for a thousand dollars.
Alternate buildings.
An alternate building inspector. So the current one can take days off here and there, and we're not sure, we're sure it'd be building inspector. FinCom recommends.
Yeah.
You good with that? Okay, Article Six, this one's you.
Alternate animal control officer for a thousand dollars.
To reestablish, cause it used to be there before.
Okay.
And this is what I wanted to say, the animal control officer, if this is approved, will be cutting her expense budget by the thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, if the omnibus passes, she will get up and make a motion to cut that from fifty-five hundred to forty-five hundred.
So there's no increase in her budget?
Yep.
She's just using it to fund assistance?
Correct.
Okay.
You good with that?
Yep.
Okay, and Finance does recommend that one. Okay, Article Seven. This is for a new part-time position for parks, and that's for fourteen thousand, three hundred and six dollars.
Which would be offset by the three thousand, six twenty. So, it'd be like a little over ten, or eleven, ten-five for that position.
This year, or coming up?
Huh?
Coming up. Yeah. We're good with that.
Good with that? Okay, Article Eight.
Standard article.
Standard article, again, for the selectmen. That's why FinCom didn't weigh into it. It's not financial related, correct?
Correct.
Well, overall, yes, you know, yeah. Because that's the omnibus budget, so we already voted to recommend it.
Okay, Article Nine, and this is for.
Operations of Sewer Department.
Operations of the Sewer Department, which is nine hundred and three thousand, fifty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. And this is all contractual and operating expenses for the sewer department. And FinCom does recommend. You good with that?
Yep.
Okay, Article Ten, and this is for, again, the Sewer Department, the Board of Sewer Commissioners. And this is for thirty-five thousand dollars, and this is for quarrying awareness.
There's a couple things that are mandated by either the state or the federal government, and this is one of them, and eleven is one of them.
Yep.
Okay.
And FinCom recommended.
Capital Planning recommends these, and.
And FinCom, we voted today, recommend.
And you recommend those, too.
So we're gonna add FinCom to this, yes?
Yes, we just got this today. This is what we met on, and we voted, so I'll say.
Okay.
Okay. So Article Eleven, again, for the Sewer Department, this is twenty-five thousand, and this is a copper reduction pump. And Capital Planning recommends.
FinCom recommends.
FinCom recommends. Are you good?
Yep.
Okay, Article Twelve, and this is, is this for the water pump?
Yes, scum pump.
Yes. And it's for the scum pump. Well, that's a pretty nice, but that's what it is, right?
Yes, it is.
The scum pump, and it's for thirty-two thousand, two hundred and four dollars and thirteen cents. And you good with that?
Yep.
And we've, FinCom recommended.
FinCom recommends. Alright, Article Thirteen.
Mister Chairman, on Article Thirteen.
Yeah.
This relates to Article Twelve to some extent. I will draw this to the board's attention. The, the total price of the scum pump is eighty-five thousand dollars, okay? So, working with the sewer commissioners and working with the chief operator, the chief operator came to me and said that there's a line out there for a clarifier account that's been sitting out there for some time. He thinks that that project's either wrapped up or is, is finished, completed. And there's been money that's been allocated since two thousand and seven of fifty-two thousand dollars. That at some point, maybe in two thousand and ten or eleven, you know, that project had, had, you know, been wrapped up, and the money's been sitting out there. So we propose taking that money that's been sitting out there and merging it with the free cash on Article Twelve to come up with the eighty-five thousand dollars. So the people are not having to take additional money from free cash or raising appropriate any of the, any item for that to fund the operation of that scum pump.
So the original article for the Article Thirteen scum pump was seventy-five thousand, so they spent like twenty-two thousand. So that's the balance that had been sitting there.
Yep.
Very good. Alright. So that, that would be an amount of fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-seven cents. That would, they would transfer out from that account to help support the scum pump.
Yep.
Yes.
So it's money that we're not taking.
Correct.
We already have.
Been sitting on the books for a long time.
Yeah, they already have.
Yep.
But that's the thing. I mean, it's been sitting on the books for a long time. Now the money's getting put to use.
And FinCom recommend.
FinCom recommends, and you good?
Yep.
You're, yeah.
Alright, so Article Fourteen, and that is for sixteen thousand dollars for turnout gear for the Fire Department. FinCom recommends.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Okay, Fifteen, and this is fourteen thousand dollars for exhaust removal system for apparatus, and that's the Fire Department. FinCom recommends.
Yep, that's good.
Okay, Article Sixteen, this is, um, this is to change and adopt a measure that is a general law that the town has not adopted yet, and this is to bring in EMTs. So if they're injured in duty, that they would be compensated fairly, just like a firefighter or, you know, police officer. Right now, currently, they are not, they are only paid sixty percent.
Workers' comp.
Workers' comp. This would actually bring them in line with other first responders under the town, and they would be given one hundred percent based on on-duty injury.
Yeah, they would, that's for, for, this would be considered injured on duty day versus workers' comp.
And that's only a measure, that's why FinCom didn't weigh into it, and new, they did capital planning. Are you good with that?
Mm-hmm, yep.
That's from the Fire Department. Okay, Seventeen, uh, this is for a hundred and ten thousand dollars to replace hoses for the Fire Department.
FinCom recommended.
FinCom recommends, Capital Planning recommends.
Yep.
And Mr. Ihaarka recommends. Alright, so we're good so far. Article Eighteen, and this is for fifty thousand dollars for a special stabilization account for fire engine for the Fire Department.
This would be a five-year funding.
So it's a five-year funding?
Yeah.
And this is put into capital planning to purchase that vehicle.
It's a replacement, too.
A replacement of the vehicle. Okay?
FinCom recommended.
FinCom recommends, Capital Planning recommends.
I recommend.
Mr. Ihaarka recommends. Okay, so Article Nineteen, this is for forty thousand dollars for the Fire Department. And this is for structural turnout gear for the Fire Department. Capital Planning recommends.
FinCom recommends.
FinCom recommends. And Ihaarka recommends.
And this is a three-year funding.
That's a three-year funding. Okay. Very good. So far, we're doing good. Article Twenty, and this is a change to the bylaw. And this is for cable advisory, and this is up in there, like, what they can do. We've talked about this before.
So Mister Chairman, it changed a little bit.
Oh, did it?
Yep, so after consulting with Town Council, they, they, the Department of Revenue has moved in the direction of recommending to towns and, and to mandating that, that cable advisory is not gonna be considered a revolving fund anymore. So what it will be considered either as a enterprise fund or a special revenue account, okay? And so, you know, for our purposes, you know, it, it doesn't make sense for an enterprise fund. So you'll see in a subsequent article, I think it's Article Thirty-three, it will, it will make the cable advisory now a peg, you know, special revenue account, and will transfer any of their monies that they've had from fiscal year twenty-four to their new special revenue account, and would, would not require them to have a cap, so they.
So this is basically going away, then?
Right, deleting it.
Correct.
So why do we even have it?
Cause we have to, it's, it's, this is a town bylaw.
It's a bylaw.
So this is gonna get changed in the book. They're gonna be deleted from it. If you look at the bylaw, they're in there.
So cables out, and then the other departments are getting.
The other ones have to get reauthorized every year.
A revision, yeah. Reauthorized.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
You good? Finance recommends, so we're good with the change. Article Twenty-one, uh, this is for twenty-five thousand dollars. This is wage classification study. And Fin, FinCom recommends.
I'm good.
We're good? Okay, Twenty-two, and this is for twenty-five thousand dollars. This is for the post-employment benefits, the OPEB fund. FinCom recommends.
I'm good with that.
You're good? Article Twenty-three, twenty-five thousand dollars. This is for the levy system and for the maintenance of it.
FinCom recommended.
Huh?
FinCom recommends.
FinCom recommends?
Yeah, we just voted today.
It's not on there.
Yeah, it's not on.
Well, because we just voted.
It's not on our budget anymore.
We did.
What's that?
It's not on our budget anymore. The, um.
Right, that's what you're gonna talk about tonight.
Yep. So that's one, take, was taken off of our budget, the levy.
We just met at, at three o'clock.
So whose budget is it on now?
It's the Article.
It's on the Article.
Anybody's budget, yeah.
So it's not, oh, so we're taking off the budget, and we're figuring out Article? So we're gonna have to vote on it each year?
For now.
For now.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to vote on it this year. You may have to vote on it every year subsequent. That's to be determined, you know?
At some, at some point, it should be cut, part of the budget.
Alright.
Right. But Rich, we just met at three, and that's why these aren't on there yet, because we just met before we came here.
So we're good with that, right? And FinCom recommends?
Yes.
And that's a reason why we were able to get the, the budget down, right? So these were offsets to free cash. So you'll see this one, and you'll see these, the maintenance, Twenty, Article Twenty-four. Another reason why we were able to get that percentage growth of the budget down.
Taken from free cash.
Right.
Okay, alright. Makes sense, makes sense. Alright, Article Twenty-four, this is for twenty-five thousand dollars, and this is the maintenance of town buildings. Town Administrator.
I'm good with it.
FinCom?
Recommends.
FinCom recommends, and Mr. Ihaarka recommends. Okay, Twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars, and this is the updating, purchasing, leasing of computers in town offices. This is a Capital Planning recommends, and FinCom?
Recommends.
FinCom recommends?
I recommend.
Rich recommends. And Article Twenty-six, it's eleven thousand dollars, and this is the senior center basement bulkhead that needs to be replaced, and that's from the senior center director, and.
FinCom recommends.
FinCom?
And also a rear exterior door.
And a rear exterior, exterior door for that, too. So that's for doing maintenance of the building. So, beyond what the maintenance fund would take care of. Okay, Article Twenty-seven, and this is thirty thousand dollars. Dry storage area to store highway equipment, and it's a highway surveyor article. FinCom?
Recommended.
FinCom, and.
I like it.
Yeah, like it. Rich likes it. So I change my checkmark to a happy face?
Smile face, yeah.
Alright, Article Twenty-eight, and this is for very lots.
This is standard.
This is a standard article that's there. FinCom doesn't opine in this because it's a procedural thing.
Same with Twenty-nine.
You good with that? And Twenty-nine, and compensating balance agreements, and that's standard article for the treasurer. And you're good with that, right? And again, FinCom doesn't, no, right, they don't opine on that type of thing. Article Thirty, and this is for.
Train station.
Oh, this is for the train station. Okay. This is from Parks. Okay, yeah, there's the rest of it, okay. So this is for purchasing the train station to utilize for parks and recreation. They have a unique situation where they can obtain that property, which could help in future events, if we use that property, we use the parking lot in the area. So we're putting that article for, for that, and right now, we're looking at assessing how much the building is worth?
Yep, yep, so we're looking at, at trying to negotiate a sale price. Looking at to seeing if we could get a purchase and sale of price together contingent upon town meeting approval. And looking at what it would potentially cost to update the building as well, to have all those, you know, questions ready, answered for town meeting.
And are we looking at any contingencies for funding?
Yep, so we had a discussion yesterday with our planning people at CMRPC, Mister Chris Dunphy. During our discussion, we were talking about CDBG funds. There is a, a section within CDBG that allows for acquisition of, of property. You know, there's a possibility that, you know, this could fall within, under that realm. There's a possibility that our current project for CDBG is gonna be under budget, potentially by a significant amount, and there's a potential that we could petition the, the folks from the state that, that monitor our CDBG account and have another public hearing, and to see if we could potentially redirect some of those funds that we would have in, in savings on our current proposed CDBG projects for fiscal year twenty-five. You know, that we could redirect those funds to offset some of the purchase price of, you know, potentially acquiring this parcel.
Okay, so the out-of-pocket cost for the town would be?
Could be, could be minimal.
Minimal.
Could be.
So acquiring property or land is, is something you can do under CDBG? And now we have an opportunity.
Great opportunity, because, again, I, I don't know how many times I've heard people say, we should buy that building. We should buy the building. The problem with that is right now, it's privately owned. It is up for sale. If somebody else purchases the building, then we lose access to the parking lot.
Not to the parking lot. There's not much parking that goes with railroad stations.
We only have five spots for the town.
But I'm just telling you.
Yeah.
If you look on a map.
Yeah, there's only five spots along the park.
They do not have much parking, even, okay.
So, so there's a chunk that will lose for the town.
Not really, because they don't even have, if you look at the, I'm not saying that you're not going to be able to make it into parking, but they don't have in the front of their building where people could park this way. They'd be on time property.
Parking for, for the town.
Correct. What I'm saying is, they don't have the straight parking. You may think that all stuff that, that's open.
Right, they park in front of the train station for the train station.
Right. No, but you may think that all that's open there does not belong to them. That belongs to the town. What they own is not as much as you think. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Belize. Welcome to the meeting, by the way.
There is a lot of parking in over there area that belongs to the train station that the town will benefit. The parks, the department has been saying that they only have a few spots, like you mentioned before, four or five.
This big piece here.
Because we found out that when, when they were trying to put the electric charging over there.
Okay.
So, I think it will be there.
Yeah, so there, there's a line, if you could draw on the line.
Yeah, let me, uh, let me share this now.
Yeah, because I know where the line is, and there's not much.
The line is right here.
No, it's not.
It is.
No.
It's from this corner.
No.
Yeah.
It's on the other side of the sign.
All right, well.
I'm just saying.
You gained, you gained three feet.
Yeah.
You're not going to.
I mean, all this, like, think about, like, the tree lighting. We had, like, the fire department, you know, we had a ton of stuff here.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying. I understand what you're saying. Okay, and also, in case you want to know, part of that building, the corner over toward the park where I think they have probably where you jump up, that's town property. So, in case you wanted to know, part of it's on town property, too.
Okay. So, I, I, I would see it as being a benefit to the town. It would greatly aid the town, because then we would have more resources within the center of the town. And we go in the building, there'd be a restroom in the building, they can do concessions out of the building. You know, there's, there's a chance they can turn some profit out of that building.
If they pay less for it, but how much money do we have to put into it to upgrade it?
Well, yeah, if we, if we can pay in CDBG money and lower what we pay, if we could pay, if the town will have to raise, like, seventy thousand dollars to say, versus the amount that we're paying, we would have to pay, and CDBG would raise, say, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars the town doesn't have to pay, and we can get the building for that, and then we don't lose that land, and that's, it's kind of a historical part of our town.
Love the building.
A lot of people love that building. They see it, and they did do a nice job in the building. They re, they renovated the inside of it, and if you go inside, it's all wood, and it's really nicely done. So, it's a nice-looking building. The only part that we would have to renovate is the back of the roof, which we can get access, that they could get access to what the town was given permission by CSX to gain access to do that. So, we would be able to fix that section of the roof, and that's the only real thing we'd have to fix in it, and then whatever needs there are for, for the Parks Department, and then it would give them a centrally-located place right in the center of our town to establish an area where they can actually do business off, and they can offer events and things like that. So, there's a lot they can do with that building versus it being vacant. And the alternative is, I've heard liquor store, I've heard a gun store, and I've heard a store selling pornography that wanted to move in there.
The latest one, just the other day, came in. He's going to want to open a restaurant, a pizza place.
It's too small, and there's no kitchen.
I'm just telling you, he came in and asked you about it.
Yeah, so.
Do we have any sense when we would know anything from CDBG?
Um, so, i- it is our goal to, to do our homework between now and, in the town meeting. So, you know, we'll be working with our planning department, with, with Chris, and, and with our, our friends at CMRPC. We'll be working with the, the owner of the property on negotiating a, a, a price contingent upon town meeting approval. So, you know, and we'll be looking at, you know, potential costs and, and grants that, that could be potentially be available to take care of some of the maintenance work that is going to be needed there. There's going to be some maintenance work that is needed there.
So, last night at the CDEC meeting, we already identified green communities can help with HVAC. The, there's an ADA grant that you can get to, like, fix up the bathrooms and maybe doorways, and there were a couple other grants I don't remember offhand right now, but those were two. Yeah, but I don't know what it targeted.
I don't either.
Yeah. But there's a lot of opportunities for grants, so.
So, it's conceivable we'd have numbers by town meeting.
Correct.
And is there any estimate as to what the funding might be from CDBG?
Um, an estimate, estimate, rough estimate, maybe somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand?
Okay. And has, and has, has there been any negotiation with the current owner at this point?
There's been discussions.
Any numbers come out?
Not, not as of yet. Alls I can say is that, first of all, I, I wouldn't want to negotiate anything in a public setting anyways, but, you know, the, the, the parcel is, has an assessed value of a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. The gentleman who currently owns it purchased it for a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, about two years ago.
Okay. So, FinCom doesn't recommend, you want this capital planning at this time, and Ms. Iyaker?
Yeah, I recommend it.
Ms. Iyaker recommends it, I recommend it.
I will say that capital planning didn't take a formal vote. It was just the sense of the meeting that it was.
Okay.
Well, I, I mean, I thought, I thought they did take a formal vote.
Yes, Mr. Belize. I'm sorry that you're on here now. So, yes, Mr. Belize?
I, I do re, I do recommend it. You can't go wrong, you know, buying properties for the town. It's, it's in, the, the value is going to go up instantly after we buy it.
Would, I have a response to that. With all due respect, that's immaterial. The town isn't purchasing the property in order to be an investment to get a return on it. It, it, so it's, it's just immaterial whether or not the property value is going to go up more or not. The property has value not because of the financial resale value of it. The property has value because of the location and the utilization by the town. But, so I just wanted to make a comment to that. The, the resale, any resale value is of no consequence. The town has no business buying properties in order to recoup resale value.
No, but it would have a value to the town as far as.
Utilization and location.
It would give us a great asset to the community to, for parks, to be able to utilize a, a more expansive area of the park. It would have restrooms, and it would also a bit, make it available for Parks Department to do something like concessions during events. It would expand our parking lot. Again, at some point, if a private purchaser goes in there and buys that property, we use, lose access to, say, to be fair, half the parking lot.
I think the big bottom line is, we have to know what it's going to cost.
Yeah, right. And, and that's why we're trying to.
Mr. Chairman?
We're trying different methods to try to lower the cost on the people, because that's our goal. It's, it's hard to do anything like this. But at certain point, you get to sit there and say, okay, there's a unique opportunity. This may not come up again, or may, it may come up next year, or it may not come up again for thirty, forty years. If, if, if a business moves in there and they say, hey, I like it here, and that's it. But it gives the town a unique opportunity for providing something for our community, because there's accessibility there, there's accessibility to a park, there could be programs that they could do out of there. There's a lot that Parks Department can do in that building, being centrally-located with the parking, and right next to a park. We don't have a nice building like that that has a historical value to the community and right along one of our parks.
A park that we're also looking to redesign.
A park that's going to be redone. So, it would, it would only make sense to do something in this opportunity, and I think it, it, it's one of those, yeah, it might be hard with the wallet a little bit, but we're trying to resolve that, so it's not. But it's one of those things that it just might not come up again, and it's kind of a unique opportunity. And it's been on the market for a long time, and it is kind of overpriced at this point. That's why we're looking at having it assessed so we can see what the fair market value is, and we have a better idea. Because right now, the assessment on it is a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-three thousand. The owner is looking at two hundred and seventy thousand?
Two ninety-nine.
Two ninety-nine. He only paid.
One sixty-five.
One sixty-five for it, so he's looking at almost doubling his money in a few years that he has.
Which is also eroded into the discussion. Can we hear what Selectman Belize has to say?
Um, Derek, you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, so what did you have to say, sir?
So, I, I just want to say that it's been through the history of Warren that many times the town officials had the opportunity to buy land, and because they had this attitude of not interested, now we, you know, we're sorry that that didn't happen, just that.
Opportunity lost.
Yeah.
Lots of times.
We passed by opportunity, so. All right, um, so.
Did you want me to take that, um, capital planning, um, mark off there, or, I mean, I thought it, I thought it was unofficial?
No, he didn't vote on it.
Okay, so I'll take it off, okay.
Yeah.
So, capital planning did not vote on it, but FinCom doesn't recommend it at this point in time. But you may, depending on, but you have to see numbers. You want to see better numbers.
We didn't see any numbers.
Okay.
But you definitely took a vote.
We definitely did have a vote.
But it, it's kind of hard to release public numbers when you're in negotiations, and you're trying to acquire a property. These are the kind of things where it's like, all right, we can't talk about it in public, and.
But by the meeting, we may be closer.
By the meeting, we probably would be closer to something.
And have better handle on the money that's involved in the grant.
The other thing we could do right now, if the other two board members want to, we can change our vote from does not recommend or.
Depending.
To, um, no recommendation at this time.
Not without numbers.
Yeah, no.
No recommendations at this time.
I know.
Yeah.
No, I do have a recommendation. Without a number, I can't recommend it, and I can't.
We also, also.
I can, I'm not going to recommend it without numbers.
We're not recommending.
Okay.
I want to change the vote from does not recommend to no recommendation at this time.
I understand.
Would you vote for that?
No.
Okay. All right, then I will make a motion.
But you may.
Right. I will make a motion to.
Before you do that, let's go through this a minute again.
Okay.
I, I want, I, I completely understand where he's coming from.
But you guys can make, you can vote on this the night of town meeting.
I understand that.
So, we can leave it on there for now?
I would just take it off, period.
Want to take it off or leave it, Ray?
If you take it off, then you can make your recommendation after the numbers in the town meeting, because this way, it doesn't sway people either way. And then you can stand up and say, we don't recommend this, and this is why, or, yes, we do, and this is why. We have to see in the numbers and reviewing the historical value and the significance of the building, yes, we recommend, or, no, we don't recommend. By, by leaving it on there.
Right.
You're, you're already given an opinion to, to say.
An explanation at town meeting can happen either way.
Yes.
It could, so my vote, as we sit here right now without numbers, is I do not recommend that article. The way that article's written, the town could be on the hook for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So, we'll just leave it as it is, and then the night of town meeting.
And, and, and so, so if we find out that CD, CDBG, get the abbreviation correct, uh, can come up with a significant portion of money, then at town meeting, it could be, I can stand up or someone could stand up and say, originally, when we had this before us, back in April, we could not recommend this article. Tonight, we can recommend the article. So, you can change your explanation either way. And I'm asked to vote on this article, and I sit here today on April twenty-four, twenty-fifth.
As it stands.
As it stands, and I cannot recommend this article. Because I have.
We can wait.
Right. I'm not saying I'm not supportive of the notion. As a matter of fact, if you, my public comments have been very supportive of acquiring the property.
But you have to do what's best interest of FinCom and the town, and that's what you're doing.
And we need more information.
And this article, the town could be on the hook for two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars plus, because grants are unknown as well.
Yes.
And I just can't support that. That's where I'm coming from. And so, it's, it's not a, it, if, if, that, it's, it's self-explanatory. I don't need to say.
Yeah, I'm with you.
And I, I'd love to see the town, the, and as far as missed opportunities, that property's been sold for years.
Yeah.
And so, someone could have spoken up two years ago to purchase this property, and now, all of a sudden, in the last couple of weeks, it's become an issue, and all I'm saying is, the way this article presents on April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, I cannot support it, and I would, and if nothing changes, I'll stand up in town meeting and make the argument why we should not pass that article. You can't pass an unfunded article, in my opinion. And so, let's see what CDBG comes up with, let's see what the property owner comes up with, let's see what grants might happen, and then you'll hear a different argument potentially on town meeting.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
All right.
I'm very fair. All right, so, um, selectmen, Mr. Belize, do you recommend? Purchasing or supporting this article?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I do.
Mr. Iyaker?
I do.
All right, and I do also. So, FinCom has not changed their opinion, and capital planning didn't vote on it. No recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, that was in the poll.
Okay, Article thirty-one. And this is adopting a general bylaw, and this is changing the, this is codifying the position of town administrator into the bylaws, because right now, we voted to create the position, fund the position, but we don't have it in our bylaws. This is adding it to the bylaw.
We recommended it.
And FinCom recommends?
Town council did change of, of some of the layout and some of the, well, some of the wording here from original proposal, but other than that, it's still the same.
And we plan on keeping town administrator for as long as we can, because that's.
One of the best things that's happened to the town.
Probably a best decision this town's made in a long time. Well overdue.
Yeah, my gosh.
I don't think we could have gotten half of the stuff we've all done without one, so. Mr. Iyaker? For people that can't see you.
Thumbs up.
Uh, Mr. Belize?
Of course, it's the best thing ever. You know, I want to tell you something very quickly. Many, many years ago, I met the fire chief, Alan, and the first thing he said was like, this town, what it needs, it's a town administrator. That's how I met the chief of, of a fire department.
Very good. So, Mr. Belize recommends also. So, now we're on Article thirty-two. And this is, um, uh, this is the, um, if the town will change the board of assessors from elected to appointed by the board of selectmen, or take any, any action relative there to. This is by the board of selectmen. FinCom doesn't have a, have a recommendation on it because it's procedural, right?
Right, we don't.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor also. Mr. Belize?
Me too.
All right.
Yes, sir, me too.
So, we're good. Article thirty-three.
It will also have to be a vote on top of the, um, the article. If the article was to pass, then it would also trigger an election, and then we would have to go on a ballot.
For next year.
For next mayor.
Yeah, there's a potential that it could go on the November one as well.
Okay.
No, election.
It, it can be.
You're going to, you're going to make a, have a, hold a special voting? You're gonna, you're gonna make it, have a, hold a special voting?
It, it could be at the same time as, as November.
Has to be on the ballot, ballot doesn't, a ballot's voted just like elections.
No, no, the November ballot.
It's a two-part vote.
Right, November ballot, not the...
So you're gonna hold a special election?
Could be, yeah.
Where you go and vote, you have to go and vote.
It wouldn't be a federal election, it wouldn't be on the federal ballot.
No, it would be, it would be, you could get, you could get the town ballot at the same time.
Right.
Yeah.
But it's an election, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Because that's the ballot.
It would be a special election.
Right, that's what I'm saying, because it's two-part, town meeting and a ballot.
Yeah.
Okay, I forgot that it's presidential election.
Yes, it's a federal election, so...
Because I don't even wanna think about it, so, okay.
Okay, Article thirty-three, and this is by the Board of Selectmen, and this is about the cable network also.
FinCom recommends.
And FinCom recommends, and this is revolving fund.
So this is taking it out of one area and putting it in another, okay, I'm, I'm good with it.
And Mr. Belize, you good with that?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're all good.
So, also in the, in the warrant is the attachment for the job description for what Parks is looking to create the new position.
Yeah.
Attachment B is also the state statute for one-eleven M and one-eleven N.
And I think we're all good with that, so we, we're good, we have nothing else. Wow, that went fairly quick.
Cool.
We didn't even come to the Selectmen meeting yet.
No.
You had a half an hour to eat ass and munches.
Wow.
And for Mr. Belize to get here.
Yeah.
Derek, you on your way?
I'm almost there, I'm just driving by in Brookfield Elementary School.
Oh, okay.
Excellent.
All right, very good, you're going home first, right? You're going home first, right?
No, I'm going straight to, to you guys.
Oh, okay, all right, very good. We'll see you when you get here, and...
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn out of executive session? No, not in the executive, no, I'm sorry. So I'll second that, all in favor?
Richi Hucker, aye.
Derek Belize?
David Dufrain, aye.
David Dufrain, aye, we are adjourned.